Yeah, because it was hard on the heart. If I had that there.
Time of God starts? Well, well, donuts and coffee spice, I guess that's what we have. I understand the joke, because that's why I was off doing donuts and coffee spice at God's start. Good morning, everyone. Uh, mostly verse in the song for today is a little timely. It's not all this week. Reverse for September due to others as you would have to do to you Luke six thirty one. Let's say that together. Due to others as you would have to do to Luke six thirty one. Right, again, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we pray that there be rain, or light, and peace. Pray it all, and thank you. And all the followers, and others who are faithful to you. For this, we explore your word today, and rest in peace. All right, um, we, the Lord suggested the song Monday. I think it's very apt, what happened? All right, so our, uh, this is your pastor, Tulliver. Tulliver, good morning, just wrap up your office. That is, that is two speakers. What? Oh. Well, this is my house. Yeah, I don't know, I'm a teenager, uh, version, yeah. I would say, uh, uh, yes. Sure. Maybe it is for a different song. It's a trial, I think, also, it's all the YouTube.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Morning, everybody. Okay, there we go. All right. Um. It's been a week. Been a week. It's good to be, uh, together now, uh, in the word of the Lord. We are in the book of Acts, chapter five. We're talking about, um, Anias and Sapphira. It sold a field. They had given some of the proceeds to the church, but claimed it was all of them. Through the power of the Holy Spirit, Peter asked Anias, why'd you do this? You didn't have to sell the field? I'm gonna have to say it was all, all this, but, um, because of this, you're gonna die. He died, right dead. He got buried. Um, they did not tell his wife in the three hours it took to prepare him for burial and bury him. Um, so, no, they didn't have cell phones back then. So, uh, maybe they tried to go find her, maybe not, I don't know. I don't know, text doesn't tell us that. It is kind of, you know, is that, was that common? I don't know, I didn't live two thousand years ago. Um, I will say this about burial practice, especially, um, Jewish burial practice, which Christian burial practices come out of, is that you were buried before sundown. Um, and the reason that they did that is that embalming did not become popular in society until, especially like Western society, until the eighteen sixties. It became popular in the United States in the eighteen sixties because of the Civil War and having to ship bodies back home. Before then, embalming was very, very rare. Um, only if you had a lot of money. And primarily, you were buried very, very soon after your death. And the reason why is because they didn't have mass refrigeration, bodies decompose, they stink pretty quickly after death, especially in, in hot and humid climates. So, um, it's not, the surprise here is, is basically that Sapphira somehow, the news did not reach her, that he had died and was buried. Um, the funeral festivities would be happening in the days after the funeral, by the way, not actually at the burial either. Because of embalming, those had become tied in our culture to kind of the same day, same event, or preceding it, when you have like the visitations and things like that, the viewing of the body. Um, but, by and large, that, that was not the case back in, in the ancient world. Um, funeral stuff, the, the, um, like the meal, the community gatherings would have happened afterwards, right? Um, also, another thing that has changed in our, uh, funeral practices is, is that because when you died, you get buried, again, until the advent of widespread embalming within, within twenty-four hours, very rarely forty-eight. The pastor was the one, they picked the ser- sermon text, they picked the hymns. I mean, you just said, you know, so-and-so died, all right, service is gonna be at such and such time, right? And they would just do it then, a lot of times graveside, right? Not necessarily in the church. In colder climates where that can happen, that would be possible. Um, but in, in warmer climates, more temperate climates, again, stinky body, you don't wanna bring that necessarily to the church. Pagan practices back in the ancient world, um, were, uh, there was a lot of cremation involved. Um, in lots of different pagan cultures, there was lots of forms of cremation. Um, you think of the Viking funeral, um, right? The Viking chiefs, they put on a ship and set it on fire, whatever. For the non-Viking chiefs, I mean, yeah, they, they, there were still some burials. Don't get me wrong, we know that from archaeological evidence. But, like, the Roman practice was, was cremation. It makes sense if you tie, uh, illness to death, corruption of the flesh. People getting sick, dealing with the dead body, you wanna get that body taken care of early, really quick. Jewish practices, again, were to bury, and out of that, Christian practices come out, Christians bury. Which is why the catacombs are full of dead Christians in Rome, by and large, right? And, um, through the centuries, there would be certain special orders of monks and things like that, that that was their job, was to tend to the catacombs, clean up the bodies, you know, things like that. Um, and if you've seen pictures of the catacombs, I've only seen pictures, but if you've seen pictures of the catacombs, your whole body wasn't necessarily put together, right? Your skull was maybe put in the skull room, your femur's put in the femur room, you know? Um, and why that is, is because, you know, the resurrection, the new body, you know, things like that. Um, so historically, the Christian practice, or Christians, um, were very much against cremation. Um, because it was tied to pagan roots. And then, in the nineteen sixties and seventies, when you had the New Age paganism coming out, and you had a wave of people being cremated to show their defiance to God, to show their atheism or their wiccanism, uh, what, whatever pagan practice they were doing. Um, and, and so the church, again, vocally came out against cremation. What about today? Well, cremation no longer is tied to those pagan roots or those anti-Christian roots. It is primarily tied to money. It is considerably cheaper for people to be cremated than buried. And so, um, in two thousand eight, there was a big switch amongst Christians. Um, there was already a trend more towards cremation, but two thousand eight, there was a big switch where people were cremated, Christians were cremated instead of buried, because what happened in two thousand eight? There was the financial crisis, people lost a lot of money. They didn't have, you know, ten grand to do, uh, a burial, but they had three grand to do a cremation. I mean, you could do a cremation very, very cheaply.
Six hundred ninety-five dollars.
Six hundred ninety-five dollars, just full of good news today, Doug. Right? So, you, um, so, should Christians be cremated or not be cremated today? The, and the, the answer to that is, if you're doing it off of financial reasons, there's, there's nothing there. If you're trying to make some sort of religious statement, right? Um, then we would counsel, what is, you know, what is the most Christian thing to do? But by and large, it's a financial decision nowadays. There is no church, the LCMS is not condemning cremation, I don't condemn cremation. Um, just because it, it is not tied to any sort of, uh, pagan practices today.
Is there any real estate concern, that, you know, take up as much space?
Um, I mean, that's part of the financial consideration, so, um, you can, so it used to be, um, you could not stack one casket on top of another. Now, that has changed in a lot of funeral, a lot of, um,
Lepine!
Cemeteries. A lot of cemeteries will allow that now, and so they'll dig the first grave deeper in order to put the, the next casket on top of both being buried. Before that, before that, before you saw that change, um, just about every cemetery that I know of would allow two cremains to be buried in the same plot. So again, who's cheaper financially?
Well, like in New Orleans, when we went there and toured that, uh,
You can't be buried in New Orleans.
Well, they were, all of their dreams were on top of the ground because of water.
Because the water, yeah, you cannot be buried in New Orleans, you're put in a mausoleum, basically, whether that's, whether that's multiple people or it's just yours.
Yeah, the old cemeteries have a, a box, a cement box.
Yeah.
We're just thinking about densely populated areas.
What? Yes, so there, there are concerns, like in places like Japan and stuff like that, there are concerns about that, real estate wise. Um, where we're at right now, you know, land's not necessarily that concerned. I'd imagine probably, you know, the crisis of return for a couple thousand years, they'll probably wind up digging our bones and moving them someplace. Uh, but, but, you know, I'll be, I'll be in heaven by then, I won't care. So.
Uh, what about, I, I've donated my body to, oh, you, you did, the will, yeah. Build a, a body program, so they'll use it for two years, cremate and then.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. In fact, the whole reason we have programs like that is because going back to, um, when, uh, body medical silent, science started to really take off in the, the seventeen and eighteen hundreds. Um, they didn't have enough cadavers, and so grave robbing was, was a big thing. Um, I forget which of the Dickens books, um, one of the characters, that's what he does at night, that's why he's always dirty and tired and grumpy. It's because he's robbing graves at night to sell to the doctors, right? Um, there's quite a bit of money there, but they had to train doctors in anatomy, and you had to do that with cadavers, and they didn't have a way to get bodies, otherwise, they've sent dreams to loss and that, but yes, that, that is, that is fine and appropriate. I'll show you how to hand up.
Um, were cremations, uh, not done back in Jesus days, or was it condemned?
They were not done by Christians. Cremation was tied to pagan religions. The Romans, the Germans, the, uh, what would become the Britons, um, the Irish, um,
Indian.
The Indians, all practiced forms of cremation tied to pagan rituals. There was some burials, again, there was some burials, but by and large, the average person was cremated.
Buried.
No, cremated, and except for Christians, except for Christians. Jews and Christians did not cremate their bodies. And the reason, the reason why is because it's a testament to the resurrection. This is why the Sadducees are pointed out as not believing in the resurrection, right? Because they were a sect of Judaism that didn't believe in the resurrection. Believers have believed in the resurrection since its promise, right?
However, I would think though, if God can take man, can take and create man out of dust, or the same breath of life breathed into him, God's spirit.
Yeah.
Then, if a person is cremated, I'm sure that God can resurrect that person.
Absolutely, yes, yeah. Which is why part of the religious stigma in Christianity in regards to cremation has lessened. Because again, we don't see cremation as being advocated for as a denial of the existence of God, right?
When did that change?
With what?
When did it get accepted and how, and how did they justify it?
It, it primarily became accepted in two thousand eight. It was already trending, it was already trending to accept cremation in the eighties and nineties, because the idiots that died in sixties and seventies, people kind of, all right, we, we don't believe in that stuff. It was a cheaper option than burial, and so it was slowly crimey, climbing, but two thousand eight is when you really saw the switch, uh, for cremation, because again, for, for everything that's involved, a couple thousand dollars for the plot, um, the opening, um, the, the funeral home, and to do the cremation, it's a couple hundred, it's, it's a couple thousand dollars or less for all of that. As opposed to, it is ten to fifteen thousand for a burial.
But if, but from Christian aspect, how did it, like, I'm a Christian, how do I justify being cremated, maybe?
There's, there's no, there's no- There's there's no, there's no religious import tied to it anymore. So so in other words, there's not a religion sitting there saying, we are, this is a part of our religious rights. Or there's not a group out there saying, we're gonna, we don't believe that God exists, and so we're gonna cremate our bodies in defiance of this God that we don't believe exists. That doesn't happen today, which is why cremation is acceptable or more acceptable um than in even just the recent past.
Was there any tieback to World War Two, I mean extermination camps?
No.
I mean, that was.
No, and and um just as an aside, one one of the things that Holocaust deniers like to point out is that it takes like three hours for a modern crematorium to burn a body, which would take, you know, however many years for this. Um the crematories that operated in the extermination camps um is not modern cremation, modern cremation that happens in a funeral home is done with dignity. Um they can burn multiple bodies at a time, they operated twenty-four seven. Um we have the designs, we have the plans on how they were built, and then also when the death rate climbed too high for them to actually use all those, they used just open burn pits as well. Um there is no connection that I am aware of culturally in America at least, with cremation to the Holocaust over in Germany. And and uh actually, those camps were like in Poland and places like that, so there there's no relation to that.
There are also regulations today that they didn't have in World War Two. Now crematoriums have to be in a certain area away from other, and there has to be a a limit to the emissions.
Yeah.
And so that's why they have to do it in a certain way that takes three hours. So that they don't break the regulations.
That's also true, yes.
Some of them do, but the EPA has firm rules.
Yeah. Nobody wants to be inhaling dust, it's that dust. Um so yeah, it, yeah, the, what happened in World War Two is different than what happens today. Um and and yeah.
Just anecdotally, just I did hear that, I asked my parents, what is, what's the deal with the hangup, and they were just speaking for LCMS, and they affirm what you said, that is, it was a defiant thing by the individual saying, I'm going to be cremated, God can't find me, he will not be able to put me back together. So I can say that part to the whole thing, but just as an, as an American thing, you know, uh or an LCMS thing. And then, he's exactly right, economically, and there were Christians who wanted cremation not for a defiance to God, simply economics. It was just not affordable anymore to be buried. And so, I don't know if that helps, but I
No, it does, it it does, yes. Um the the LCMS used to be opposed to cremation officially, it it has dropped that as far as I know. I've never seen any official um document today, yeah.
And we just talked about, you know, a lot, you know, it wasn't economical back then, it's not today, there's, you know, there's so many people that they're low income, they're on a fixed economic, they just can't afford.
Yeah.
A full traditional, you know.
Correct, yeah.
So. Well, our um previous church, the pastor's dad passed away, and they took his cremains and buried them with his mom, but part of that was, he was ninety-five years old, they were ten hours away from where his mom's grave was, and it's expensive to transport a body.
And I see, I think, yeah, right.
It's, it was a lot easier to have him cremated here for six hundred ninety-five dollars, and then they could carry the cremains to the, to the uh cemetery in Chicago, and it was maybe another thousand dollars for burying the the cremains contained.
Now, I will say this, we discourage the spreading of ashes. You know, I saw a video a couple weeks ago, I think it was cowboy takes his last ride, and you know, they slapped it. We discourage that because that's not a testament to the resurrection, right? Oh, he wants to be in his favorite place forever. Or she wants to be in her favorite place forever, you know, um I I forget, there's this stat, I think it's like six or twelve. Six or twelve um cremains are scattered throughout a football season at an OU football game.
Um.
Right?
Wow.
But that's every sporting event, by the way, right? Yeah, makes makes you, right? Um, right, oh, they, you know, they they wanted to be on the field, right? And and it's like, no, we we, hey, listen, our actions testify to what we believe, and so if you are, if somebody is cremated, we do encourage burial. Um and I will just say, as as a pastor, um as a pastor who has had members who are funeral directors, leaving the cremains on your mantle extends grief. It really does, there there is a lack of closure. Right? Um and so we do encourage burial. Um
Not scattering, yes scattering.
We discourage scattering.
In the ocean? It is, well, you can't.
Yeah, listen, if you die on a boat, okay, and they do it on the boat, right, they give you the Navy farewell, then by all means, but but otherwise
But you won't be cremated on a ship.
I know, I realize.
There are places where you can't, where you're not supposed to, like the Grand Canyon, you're not supposed to take ashes down there, it's illegal.
Yeah.
And there are people that do it, but it's illegal.
By the way, never do it on a shoreline, because the wind blows in from the ocean. Full up, full up, you know, I I bickered in California, and we had to remind people of that. The big, yes, that is very, very true, the big lebowski, where it flies back in their face, doesn't matter if it's on the east coast or the west coast. The wind comes in off the ocean, alright, so never scatter it on the shore. Um but yeah, we encourage burial.
But this is not something that God commanded, that you have to be buried?
No, we we encourage it because it uh, we encourage burial instead of scattering because it testifies to the resurrection. That our, that our hope is where Christ is. Right? It it's not, oh, this was their favorite places, we want them to be in their favorite place forever. Right? That that's
Because Christ was buried. When after his death, he was buried, he wasn't cremated, but he was buried. So that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't freak people out, Christ had been cremated and came back on the third day?
Yes, yes, that would, yeah, so.
There's also pretty, pretty precedence for folks who are burned at the stake in the mayhem. A portion of the reason they were doing that was to, there was a stigma associated with it.
Yeah, I will say that, I forget who it was. Was it John Ark? No, no, there there was, there was somebody who was burned at the stake. Then those remains were burned at the stake, I can't remember if it was a third time, and then scattered on the river.
He was just there.
The sign, yes, okay, I think it was, they was telling me about that, yeah.
Three times, they wanted to make sure, and then scatter in the sand, yeah.
Yeah.
It also prevents, given the time period, prevents the creation of any relics from the bones.
Yes.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons why they burned at the stake as well.
To entirely wipe her out from existence.
They would burn heretics at the stake to prevent relics. Yeah, John Huss was burned at the stake, yeah, they would, they would then grind up the bones and scatter, scatter those, so in anyway, um I wasn't planning on spending thirty minutes on this.
We do.
Really?
We always go.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on verse seven of chapter five. After an interval of about three hours, his wife came in not knowing what had happened, and Peter said to her, tell me whether you sowed the land for so much. Now, remember back, the first couple verses, but a man named Ananias and his wife Sephira sold a piece of property, and with his wife's knowledge, he kept back for himself some of the proceeds and brought only a part of it and laid it at the apostle's feet. So then Peter gives her an option to confess or to correct, right? In the same way, and this is in the same vein, with Peter sitting there saying, hey, listen, you you didn't have to do this, but but you're you're seeking God's glory for your own, and so that's gonna lead to immediate that consequence, so tell me whether you sowed the land for so much, which he said, yes, for so much. But Peter said to her, how is it that you have agreed together to test the spirit of the Lord? Now notice that, to test the spirit of the Lord. Now, the acts of the apostles could also be called the acts of the Holy Spirit. Because it's the Holy Spirit in power testifying to the resurrection of Jesus Christ through the apostles, through Stephen, you know, the deacons, through Christians in power testifying to the resurrect, death and resurrection of Jesus Christ. And so, again, he's not sitting there saying, you're not lying to me, you're not lying to the church, you are lying to God himself. Right? And what's the, and he, and he says test, to test the spirit, what's the command? Do not put the Lord your God to the test, right? Jesus reminds Satan of this, when he says, you know, jump off of here and and nothing bad will happen, right? Because they won't let your uh uh
Quote something.
Yeah, foot hit a stone, right, you won't, you won't even get a stubbed toe, right? And and J- Jesus responds, you shall not put the Lord your God to the test, right? So both Ananias and Sephira have put the Holy Spirit to the test, is this actually God or not? Is this, is this burgeoning church of God or not? Remember, that was one, are we there yet? Can't remember that, that was um with everything that happened this week, I forgot. Um when they were oh, that happens later in the chapter, okay? Um Luke gives us the answer um to uh Gamaliel's question of, men of Israel, take care that what you're about to do with these men for before these days, Thudias rose up, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um so in the present case, I tell you, keep away from these men and let them alone, for this plan is, if this, for, if this plan or this undertaking is of men, it will fail, but if it was God, you will not be able to overthrow them, you might be even found uh opposing God. So Luke is giving us the answer to Gamaliel's speech to the Sanhedrin here at the beginning of this chapter. Um don't put the uh you have agreed together to test the spirit of the Lord, right? Unbehold, the feet of those who have buried your husband are at the door, and they will carry you out. Immediately she fell down at his feet and breathed her last. When the young men came in, they found her dead, and they carried her out and buried her beside her husband. And great fear came upon the whole church and upon all who heard of these things. Right? So imagine you're dirty, you're dusty, you're like, we gotta go find Sephira, uh tell her what happened, and hey, guys, you gotta go bury Sephira, you know? Um all in a day's work, I guess, so um
Well, it was, it was answered in a very vivid way, everybody would remember.
It was, and great fear fell upon the church and all who heard of it. Um what's the beginning of wisdom?
Fear.
Fear of the Lord, right? That this is a work of God, that what Peter and Paul are, not Paul, but but what Peter and John and the um other ten apostles are preaching is of God. And to oppose it in some sort of way or to seek its glory, which is a violation of the first commandment, um can have immediate severe consequences for you temporally. Again, we talked about this last year, we have no idea where Ananias and Sephira wound up eternally, the scripture does not say that, we are not gonna speculate on that. Um no, when we get to heaven, there's a high probability you'll see them, and if not, then you'll have your answer. Um but but that's not where we're going with this, and that's not the point of this. Um it is, it's a warning, and Luke is, again, like all good authors, he's foreshadowing things to come. Alright, and so we're gonna see this with um um Simon the magician, Simon the magician, who wants to buy the power of the Holy Spirit, right? Right, this this, um when it comes to the church, we put to death our ego and we pick up the cross of Christ. It's not about us. It's not about us, it's about Jesus Christ. In Him, we find our new identities, in Him, we're we're, we don't just become this this nameless, faceless blob of humanity, right? Um but it, so when I say we put to death our ego, we put to death our self-worship, we put to death our our idolatry, of our raising ourselves above others, raising ourselves above all things, seeking our glory, seeking our comfort, what what Luther would call the God of our belly. Right? Where it's all about me, and we focus on Christ. And in Him, we are made new, we find a new identity. Um scripture says that we are given a new name, right? Um our name is written in the book of life, okay, well, if you were to lose all identity things, you wanna have a new name. You wanna have your name in the book of life, right? So individuality still exists in eternity. Um it's just those those sinful parts of our identity, of our nature, we are to uh daily, as Luther puts it, um drown, right? And rise again, uh arise in our baptismal identity. So any questions on this section? I know we had a lot of debate last time on uh okay? Somebody wants to read verses twelve through sixteen.
Through the hands of the apostles, many signs and wonders were done among the people, and they were all with one accord in Solomon's forest. Yet none of the rest there joined them, but the people esteemed him highly. And believers were increasingly added to the Lord, multitudes of both men and women, so that they brought the sick out into the streets and laid uh and laid them on beds and couches, that at last, or that at least the shadow of Peter passing by might fall on some of them.
How far? Um verse sixteen, the next verse.
And also a multitude gathered from the surrounding cities to Jerusalem, freeing sick people and those who were tormented by unclean spirits, and they were all healed.
Right. So any questions on this section before we dive in? Okay? Um so we've been told some of the signs and wonders, and we get told, hey, many signs and wonders are happening, we just got told of a sign and wonder, and then Luke says, hey, many signs and wonders are happening as well, they're, they're not all recorded here as 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 uh John kind of finishes his gospel, if everything was written down, where would the end of that book be, right? It'd be the longest book in the world. Have you ever seen the picture of the, I mean, like the book that's like this tall, and then like they open it up, it it would be like that, you you wanna be able to finish it in your lifetime of reading it. Um so we're, I think that's really, really important um in talking about some of this, because our dear brothers and sisters of Pentecostalism, right? They read Acts, and they're like, well, why aren't these gifts, why aren't these things happening in the church today? And there are months and years separating some of these events, right? Um we often read scripture, um even the the Old Testament, and and we, you know, it's like, wow, amazing thing after amazing thing after amazing thing, why isn't that happening today? And there could be a whole generation between once, you know, one prophet and the next, right? Um think of the book of Judges, right? Got, judge dies, then people go astray, and a new judge has to arrive. How much time do you think it is before people go astray? I mean, pretty soon, but how much until a new judge arises? You're talking twenty, thirty, forty years, a lot of times. Um so do miracles still happen? Do miracles still happen? Yes, they do. But this is one, these are um this is an extra power of the Spirit to verify the message that Christ was crucified and rose again from the dead. And two, um notice who is hearing about this? Jerusalem and the people immediately around it. There are very few people in Rome that are hearing about this or know about this. Alright, if anybody at the time, alright? Um so Um, so, some of these things are happening with great amounts of time in between them, and we have to realize that when we read Scripture. It is, it is the Word of God, it is written through a human author who is not necessarily concerned about telling you, by the way, Paul spent three years in Ephesus, right? He's gonna hit the high points, just like every good story's going to do. And so he's going to foreshadow things that are going to come later as well, um, with this, so, Sarah?
Yeah, um, and the ancient writers, and, and the ancient readers, they weren't used to chronological accounts.
No.
That, that was not important to them. They wrote thematically a lot of times.
Yes.
And there would be a theme, and they would tell everything under that theme, and then they move on to the other theme. So they would cluster events according to theme more than chronologically.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's even in the New Testament, you have John telling about Jesus in the temple, throwing out the moneylenders, and it's kind of like watching a movie where you, it starts in the middle, and then it goes into a flashback. That's what I think of with John, but he wanted to establish something in John in chapter two, and then he went back and, and kind of did the lead up to it, but it was all very thematic and, you know, put together.
The, the only way that we know that John takes course over three years, and why, why we tie Jesus' ministry to three years, is because John records three separate passages. But if you're not looking for that, I mean, it, it feels like it, I mean, because half of John's gospel is just the last week of Jesus' life. Right? Um, so, um, yes, they would clump things together thematically, even if they happened years apart, because what was more important was the theme or the subject they were talking about, not the chronology. Very much different than how we write history today, or histories today.
I'm just gonna do a flash for the thread, quote, wait, wait, because there are miracles today in the book. And you, and, and Jesus, Jesus' whole ministry was just thirty years, or thirty-three years, and what do we hear about most?
Well, his earthly life was thirty-three years, his, his public ministry, and that's what I'll say, his public ministry was three years.
So you hear most about his birth, and, you know, at, at the age of twelve, and then after.
Yep, at the start of his public ministry.
Yeah, so, so, you know, wait.
Except for John, which records his first miracle, which is actually before his public ministry begins, right? But he already has disciples then. Um, and so, uh, I'm not gonna go down that rabbit hole, but, um... So there's many signs and wonders regularly done among the people by the hands of the apostles, right? So that's all twelve apostles, including Matthias, who we have not heard of since the lot fell to him. Um... And they were all together in Solomon's portico. Now, the question is, is why are they in Solomon's portico? Or Solomon's porch is, was that the New King James you were reading? Okay.
Yeah.
Why did they keep on going there? They've been told not to preach in the temple.
That's where the people, that's where the people are.
It's where the people are, in particular, which people?
The Jews that are gonna listen and know what they're talking about.
The people who believe in the one true God, right? And so what are they there? Hey, guys, the Messiah came! All right, the guy you've been waiting for, he came! And we are healing in his name, um, we're performing miracles in his name. Um, but, but notice this, "None of the rest dared join them, but the people held them in high esteem." Who's none of the rest?
Some. I already wrote the footnote, some of the Christians were afraid of what was happening to Sephira and, and, uh, Ananias, and so they kept their distance. If you saw something like that happen, certainly you would...
But, but it says, but the people held them in high esteem. It said, "None of the rest joined them, but the people held them in high esteem." You, you can understand that in two different ways, all right? You can understand that in, or actually, let me say, three different ways. That it was only the apostles who were going to the temple, and none of the other believers were going, that's one way. But people held them in high esteem, in other words, um, people recognized that they were somehow holy, all right? Um, that the priests, Sadducees, Pharisees, those leaders, would not join them, and were opposed to them, but the people held them in high esteem, so they, they were having trouble to do anything with them, because we're, we're about to have them arrested in this next section of chapter five. Right? Um, and then, the third one is, is that nobody was willing to become Christian, or, or, um, confess Christ, so to speak, um, but they believed that they were somehow tied to God. And very much the same way, this is, is kind of a, um, who do people say that I am? Some say Elijah, some say the prophet, some say John the Baptist, right? So, so there's this view of Jesus that, well, we don't know if he's the Messiah, but we just know he's of God, we're just not sure what that means, and they weren't willing to, and, and we see this with, just a second, Ron, we see this with Jesus' confrontations with the Pharisees quite a bit, where they refuse to answer him, because to answer him correctly would be to proclaim him as the Messiah, but they're unwilling to do that. So those are the three ways to understand this verse, and they might all be true.
I kind of suspected that perhaps it may have been along the lines of, because it says in the crowd, "Held, uh, held them in esteem," you know? Um, that perhaps it may have been more along the lines of, they already knew before this what happened to Jesus. And if they believed, yes, but they were probably afraid of what would happen, like, to them, you know, what, what the, what the scribes and the Pharisees would have done to them as a result of them joining the, the, uh, the apostles in their work, you know? That's kind of how I took it.
Okay. Now, out of the three options that I just gave you, by the way, Scripture immediately eliminates one of them. Verse fourteen, how's that start? Oh, so, okay, so people were believing, so that leaves us one of two options. Either the rulers, um, are still in opposition, but the people keep them from prosecuting them.
Right.
Or the other Christians are afraid to come with, uh, the apostles because of what happened to Ananias and Sephira.
Yeah.
All right? When you get to heaven, you get to ask, all right?
Yeah.
Given their lack of attention to chronology, two sentences might not actually be related. It could be, they didn't want to join them at the church, but, or at, at Solomon's portico, but out on the streets, people were joining them.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. And notice this. Um, Luke gives an explanation of the multitudes, of both men and women. Why?
Because it creates a show of mysticism, like, what you're thinking. He has to, he has to specify women, otherwise it'd be a massive...
No, that, that would just be assumed. That would, I mean, it'd be assumed that it's both, normally.
I, I would guess that because the church, at that time, the relative Jews did not believe women had any true place. And they, they went along with their husbands.
Yeah, they didn't have a religious voice. Um, that's part of it. Yeah. Um, who was responsible for the faith in the household?
The husband.
The husband was, right? How did you cha- how did you trace if you were Jewish?
The husband's the husband.
Ah, to the husband. Anybody, the male man could be your dad, we don't know, but we know who your mom is. Right? We know who your mom is. Um, so, uh, proving that you were Jewish, the lineage is traced through the mother.
Father.
Um, so... It's a gospel for all people.
Yes.
Men and women, right? And, and so, and I've talked about this, there is an egalitarianism in Scripture, not to be confused with modern egalitarianism today, um, but this, this lifting up of women, um, treating them fairly, treating them with respect, uh, treating them as people, as human beings, uh, which is not anywhere found in the ancient world outside of the church. Um, and so this idea that there's men and women there is that they're not just preaching to the men. They're not just healing men.
Well, the whole Bible has women in it.
Yes.
I mean, it's, if you know, it was Adam and Eve, and Eve, and Eve would be actually looked at at the same time, and Mary and Joseph.
Yeah, but you'd be surprised at how often people...
Yeah, and then, and then beyond.
Move that chair, because when the youth come down, they're gonna open that door right to that chair. Um, so, um... The gospel is for everyone, right? Uh, the church is made up of all believers. And that, um, as, as Christ dealt with men and women, so the apostles are dealing with men and women, it is again reflective of the ministry of Jesus Christ. Um, because he could have just left it at, and believers were added to the Lord, right? But he clarifies men and women for, for a reason. Um, and again, not to be confused with today's modern egalitarianism, um, which in many ways denies differences of, of the sexes, um, but in a way where we look upon each other in the eyes of love, right? Not in the eyes of ego. Uh, so that, "They even carried out the sick into the streets and laid them on cots and mats as Peter came by." Uh, that as Peter came by, at least his shadow might fall on some of them, right? So, the Holy Spirit is working in such a way, um, through the apostles, through Peter, that even his shadow was seen to have healing properties. So again, a continuation, and so if, if there's a guy that powerful, you're gonna pay attention to his works. And the miracles verify the message. "The people also gathered from towns around Jerusalem, bringing the sick and those afflicted with unclean spirits, and they were all healed." And notice that, he could have just said the sick. He said the sick and the unclean spirits, because demonic oppression and sickness were both seen as tied together, and seen as tied with sin. And so, that the gospel, the message of Jesus Christ, gives healing and freedom from demonic possession and oppression. Um, and when that they're healed, it means that they are restored. All right, they're, they're restored to health. Um, did these people then go on and live normal lives and die? Yes. Right, I, I don't think there's anybody that was alive two thousand years ago who's still walking earth today, at least in physical form. You know, uh... But, so, so they were restored, they were healed, they were brought to health, and again, it's just further confirmation of that, and the reason that Luke is building this up is because they're about to be arrested. And so Luke is building up the narrative once again, and they're about to be arrested. And it's so that we clearly know who's in the right, who's in the wrong, all right? There is a little bit black and white storybook villain in this. Why? Because there's no reason to confuse people, quite honestly. You want the people hearing this to be assured of the message of salvation that the apostles preached to them. There are people alive reading this book when it is written, who knew Peter? Who knew John? Who knew the apostles? Um... Paul is still alive when this book is written.
Well, it even, it even tells in verse sixteen, "People gathered from towns around Jerusalem."
Yeah.
How did they know? Other people told them.
Other people told them, because where were those people? They were going to the temple, they were going to worship God, right? And they go back home, and they're like, there was this guy that healed a man who was lame. There was this, there was this guy who passed out, passed out a demon, right? There's, there's, you know, this, this, this mother brought out her sick son, and as he walked by, her son was made well. And it's very similar, you know, Luke chapter two, just real fast, we got, we got a few minutes here, Luke chapter two, it's, it's the Christmas account. So it's implied here where it's explicitly stated in Luke chapter two. "So the angels appeared to the shepherds," verse fifteen, is where we pick up the story. "When the angels went away from them into heaven, the shepherds said to one another, 'Let us go over to, to Bethlehem and see this thing that has happened, which the Lord has made known to us.' And they went with haste and found Mary and Joseph and the baby lying in a manger. And when they saw it, they made known the saying that had been told them concerning this child." So they had heard a message, they see the confirmation exactly as the angels told them. "And all who heard it wondered what the shepherds told them." Who's all that heard it? It's not just Mary and Joseph. These people knocked on doors, these people woke people up, it was... Been in the room from birth of both my child, it's not a silent night, all right? There's people awake, all right? And so when we hear the gospel, and we believe in the gospel, we can't not tell people, right? One of the reactions to the gospel is not to bury the talent in the ground, but is to go invest in other people, which means to go tell other people the gospel of Jesus Christ, the forgiveness of sins, the death and resurrection for them. Um, and so, a little bit more explicit here in Luke chapter two than it is in Acts five, but it's the same thing that's happening. People are experiencing the Word of God, and they are telling people about it. And that's where we're gonna end for today.